All kinds of goodies, just like it's Christmas.
Hey, you're lucky I waited a year to get mine.
Yeah?
Oh boy, they're nice though.
Alright, uh, did you get connected?
No.
So you can jump on my hotspot if you want. James is right there.
I wanted to go to Los Angeles. I usually go to LA on the train.
So it's connected?
Heath, it's just not fun right now, wearing a mask for two thousand miles.
Yeah?
And, and you know, you can go to your room and take it off. Yeah, it's two and a half days. But it's fun, but it's not fun doing that, you know? It's just not fun traveling for me right now, you know? I am going to Lafayette next week.
On the train?
No, just go down and visit, do some mental checking.
Where's the train leave from here to?
Mineola to Dallas, Fort Worth in south, down to Austin and San Antonio is the hub, you know, so. Pretty neat. It's, it's fun for me. I enjoy, you know, meals are included on it and everything. You get to see a lot of Texas that you, that I've never seen before, you know?
Yeah, riding on the train, I imagine, so I've been on a train a couple times, but nothing like that.
It's just, it's just kind of so down right now. The, the observation car is not in use right now. That was always fun because you had a big car and you'd go up there and lounge around, you got your cell phone. Just kick back.
Kitchen, drinks, all that kind of stuff, right?
Snacks.
I'm on your ass.
Just the way it is right now.
Bring that battery.
Like everything.
Yeah.
Who's that out there? Who's that little child? Is that somebody's family?
That kid registered to vote?
Yeah, they registered, yes. Deadline is the third.
Ladies and gentlemen, please turn down your cell phones, silent, please. Thank you.
So have you ever ridden on a high-speed rail?
Yeah, but I was so jet lagged that I barely, we rode from Paris to Amsterdam.
Really?
But it was three hours after we got off the flight, so.
Do you have a sensation of moving?
Oh yeah.
At first, yeah. You get used to it though.
Kind of go back in the chair and.
This, to me, it feels like a, if you've ever ridden in a Tesla, they've got that real smooth torque application. So you go zero to two hundred super fast and it's smooth.
We're, we're pretty, we're pretty advanced in many ways, but we're behind in trains, you know?
We went from, like, so it's a sixteen and a half hour flight from Houston to Taipei.
Yeah.
And then I took a medium rail from Taipei over to the high-speed rail. And then basically took that all the way to Taipei. And basically walked into the office. So I was up about thirty hours straight at that point.
Wow.
Yeah, I was in the smell, like, just from being out and about that long. You'd take a shower and try to get clean.
Really?
Yeah, just because we didn't book a hotel stop on the way.
I'll tell you one thing, you get on M-train.
Thirty hours and the rest of the work.
You got, you got that call of roommate. And believe me, you're, you're like a sausage, you know, a little, little sardine or something. I mean, it's like every space is, you know?
Wow.
But it's kind of neat. It's kind of neat, you know? I enjoy it. I really, really enjoy it. Well, I get, I get a whole day to sightsee in Los Angeles. And I get an open, go out on Sunset Boulevard, I go by. You see some things real quickly that I like to see. I love music, so I want to see where the Eagles started and the doors and all that stuff.
Hotel?
That, that when I was a young, young lad, before you were born.
Yeah, probably. Yes, yes.
All the family's doing good.
Yeah.
Everyone is.
As good as expected, yeah.
Preacher may not show, so. Who is he?
Okay, thank you, Les.
Back right corner.
Which one is he?
In the black jacket, back right corner.
In the corner?
There he is, there he is.
Can you scroll up to the community interest slide real quick?
I told the preacher, I said, if you bring a hundred of those parishioners, I will get a pie.
Is that just the chances, one out of a hundred, litro up on your face?
I think so.
Hey, there, that ain't gonna happen.
Just playing the honest.
Just trying to get people more.
Yes, sometimes you need to gimmick, you know, you gotta sell it.
Gotta do something.
Yeah, you gotta get the numbers up. Door prizes, door prizes. First hundred people gets some pie and elected officials.
I dogged beer, you get everybody in town.
Alright, we ready? We're rolling?
Yes, sir.
Alright, uh, so it's six o'clock. I'm now called to order this meeting of the City of White House Council for this evening, Tuesday, January the eleventh of twenty twenty-two. It is six PM. Ms. Hargis, will you please call it over?
Yes, sir. James Wansley.
Here.
Zach Frisco. Michael Lo.
Here.
Heath Rosenstein.
Here.
Georgia Harris.
Here.
And John Chambers.
Here.
We have a core.
Thank you. Pastor Michael Fleming with the White House First Assembly of God is here with us tonight. We all please stand if you're able and join Pastor Fleming as he leads us into a word of prayer.
Well, thank you guys for inviting me. Thank you for opening and prayer. And First Timothy two tells us to pray for all of our leaders. And so we as a church do that every Wednesday. I want you to know we're praying for you. And thank you, all leaders in the room, for what you do for our great city. God, we thank you for White House. We thank you for what you're doing here and the work that so many are doing. And Lord, we pray for just your wisdom, your guidance, your blessing upon this meeting and upon our city as we move forward. Thank you for being with us through challenges of last year and all the exciting things that are ahead of this year. Lord, we thank you for this city. We thank you for our, our great country. And we ask you just to bless this time tonight in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Fleming. Ready to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Texas flag?
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Pretty good. I'll throw it at the end a little bit. Alright, thank you, everyone. Please proceed. Um, we'll start off with presentations. We have some great presentations to make an introduction of promoted and new employees. Mrs. Black.
Mayor and Council, I will start off with Stephanie Nichols. Stephanie Nichols has been with the City of White House for nearly four years and was recently serving as a customer service representative in our front office. But as of January third, she is now serving as our inter-agency coordinator. And as you all remember, in the strategic plan and the management plan done back in twenty nineteen, a position was identified to really kind of serve as the hub for our contacts and communications with agencies within White House. And we've done a lot of work to set up an inter-agency council and that has kind of brought about the need for this position. Stephanie recently finished her bachelor's degree in December. And so, um, we're very proud to have her in that role and she has already taken on a ton of things. So, um, we appreciate all that she does for her and are excited to announce this promotion.
Yeah, thank you, Stephanie. Congratulations.
And then I will turn it over to Jennifer Lusk to introduce the other two new employees.
Mayor and Council, I'd like to introduce our new customer service representatives, Megan Ortiz. Uh, Megan is a White House high school graduate and has an associate's in general studies from Tyler Junior College. Has two local, um, government, or two years of local government experience as a telecommunications and is here tonight with former colleague Jeremy. Lisa has twenty years' experience from Southern Communications and has been a resident of Smith County since nineteen ninety-four. Is a mother of three and a grandmother of four.
Awesome. Thank you for that. We have an outstanding team. It's awesome to see that team grow. And, uh, the level of quality that goes into consideration for the interview process, you should both be proud that you made it through. It's not an easy process. And, uh, welcome aboard, Stephanie. In your new role.
Thanks.
Captain of the ship. Alright. Uh, that takes us over to, uh, community interest. So what items do we have on the subject of community interest, Ms. Black?
Mayor and Council, City Hall will be closed on Monday, January seventeenth in observance of Martin Luther King Junior Day. And the Chamber of Commerce Annual Vanquaid will be held on the evening of January twenty-seventh. And that'll be an exciting event that they weren't able to have last year due to COVID. So, um, we're excited that that will be coming back up. And I believe the mayor is going to give a State of the City address at that event as well. So encourage everyone to get tickets if you haven't already. And then if you have noticed, work going on around town, specifically here at the corner of East Main and Bascom and at the two monument signs at Toll Forty-Nine and One Ten and Three Forty-Six in Runes Quarter. That is, um, Texas Otters doing that work as a part of an award that Keep White House Beautiful received in twenty nineteen. And that's about a hundred and fifty thousand dollar project all total, um, which will include some landscaping and hardscaping at each of those locations. So, um, we're very excited that that project is getting underway.
That's great.
Fantastic.
That is good.
Alright. Yeah, the Chamber event's going to be great. We're going to share a State of the City and have some, um, economic development news as a way to kind of spread the word about the momentum that we're building here in the city. Uh, to couple with the momentum that they're building there at the Chamber. It's, uh, it's going really great. Alright, the next section is public forum. Has anyone signed up to speak in public forum, Ms. Hargis?
Yes, sir, I'm signed.
So we'll go past that to the consent agenda. So the only item really on the consent agenda is approval of the minutes of the, uh, council meeting that was held on the fourteenth. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion to move that item off for discussion or approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make a motion and we approve the minutes of the city council meeting on December fourteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Second that.
Alright, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Hearing none, motion carries, consent agenda is approved. Alright, going on to item H, other action items, ordinances, resolutions, and public hearings. Number one is consider and take action on an ordinance providing for the sale and issuance of the City of White House Texas Combination Tax and Revenue Certificate of Obligation Series twenty twenty-two and ordaining other matters related to the subject. Mrs. Black.
Mayor and Council, if you'll remember, we have been discussing this as well as the next item, the refunding of the Series twenty twelve bonds for quite some time. And as you know, one of our strategic plan goals is to have a comprehensive debt management strategy. And as a part of that, we're in close contact with specialized public finance who is here tonight, as well as our bond counsel, um, to make sure that we're not only being good stewards, but that we are, um, planning appropriately to ensure that our tax rate is stable and that we're providing great value to our citizens. So as a result of those goals, um, staff put together a list of capital improvement projects that we needed to look at either in the near term or the long term, and those projects totaled over seventeen million dollars. And so staff reached out to specialized public finance late twenty twenty-one to start looking at what we could do to start moving some of those projects forward and ensure that we are, um, maintaining our debt rate or reducing it going forward. And so, um, you all took action back in October of last year, and this is a result of that action. So, um, Paul Jason with Specialized Public Finances here, as well as Clark Kimball, the city's bond counsel, um, to present the, uh, bond information that was received today.
Going up, gentlemen?
Good evening, uh, Mayor, Council, and Staff. Um, good to see you again. I was here in November. And we're here with the final results. I've got this hard copy of presentation as well. Just for the record, Paul Jason, Specialized Public Finance, and then also Clark Kimball is here, as well as your bond attorney, as Leslie mentioned. And so we took bids this morning. Leslie and Jennifer were able to, uh, to watch that process. It's, uh, somewhat boring until the last few seconds and then bids come in and they go away and they come in. Um, everybody's jockeying to try to get, uh, get the deal, uh, if they have it sold and they want, want to win the bid, or if they don't win the bid, they don't make any money. So, um, the winning bid was one point. If it's okay, I'll talk about both one and two items and then the council can take action after.
Yeah.
That's okay if you just hit them both at once. Uh, so the certificates, um, have a rate of one point seven two percent. When I was here in November, uh, we presented a rate of two point one three percent. So, uh, very pleased that those rates came in below. At the time, we had a little cushion built into that. Uh, rates have gone up, but we still were able to achieve a, a rate less than two percent. Very pleased with that. The final maturity is twenty thirty-three. That was the structure, um, that we were advised to go out with. A lot of discussions with council and staff. And then, of course, there's no INS debt service tax rate impact, uh, from this transaction. Uh, but the next, uh, piece we took bids on were the geo-refunding bonds at nine thirty. Uh, so we had them thirty minutes apart, one at nine, one at nine thirty. Uh, the rate on those bonds, they have a shorter maturity, is, is one point two three five. Uh, we showed you a one point three two five. Uh, so we came in, um, lower on, on that one as well. As far as the savings, we showed you savings of around three percent. That's on a net present value basis. Uh, right now, we're at four point two percent, around two hundred and forty thousand. Uh, we do not extend the term of those bonds. Those have the same final maturity of the bonds we're refunding at twenty twenty-eight. We're expected to close on these in mid, uh, February after, uh, council approves, these and I, Clark and his team will move forward and everything approved through the Attorney General. And then that issue for the COs will be available on the sixteenth of the refunding bonds. Uh, we'll be leaving the fees as well on the sixteenth of February.
What was the total savings amount again, based on that rate?
Total savings, um, on the refunding, two hundred and forty-five thousand, sixty-eight thousand is the total savings. And we've got this in here as well, just for.
Oh, those reflect the, the rate that we received during, okay.
That's the, that's the actual rate.
I got you.
That we, uh, we achieved.
So you all printed these after you had those, okay, I got you now. I was writing numbers in here feverishly thinking, but there is, right here.
So this is the current, th- this is the actual sale results that we're providing today. Uh, this is updated from the November presentation. Slide two is just, uh, rates have stayed low. They, they've crept up a little bit. It's still historically low. They've been higher around ninety-seven percent of the time. Uh, so it was a really favorable time to go out in the market. When we sold the COs in two thousand eighteen, we had a rate of around two point seven percent. Uh, we were very thrilled to be inside of three percent at that time. Rates continued to go down. Uh, so just to put it in perspective, having a rate for essentially a, a ten-year maturity of one point seven two is, is pretty impressive. Page four, um, I would like to back up in one of the key points to this is your rating. Um, Leslie, I'm, I'm sure you informed the council of the rating. Significant accomplishment, and that's one of the reasons why these bids are, are so aggressive. To go within a rating category is a lot easier than going to another rating category. You went, um, from A-plus to double A-minus, so you went a whole rating category. Uh, so that's extremely impressive and a testament to, you know, increasing reserves, confidence in management, uh, council and the governing body. Economic activity is vibrant, access to a triple A economy entirely. We have the full rating report in the back and the appendix for those that want to read the full report, um, on the city. But that's something I left off. Sorry, Leslie, it's such an important component. Leslie and Jennifer were really involved in that process with the rating call and have it S and P. So that's why we had such aggressive bids too, as your, your credit profile improved. The structure, um, is on page five. Uh, previous page, if you stay there if you don't mind, the page four is all the bids that came in. Six bids, very pleased with all the bids that came in. And to have a spread between the high and low, um, of almost thirty basis points is, we typically don't see that. They're typically a lot tighter. I'm sure Baird is not happy that they left some, some money on the table, easily there within one basis point of the cover bid. But you can see, we talked about the refunding, they came in last place. So, uh, that's why we competitive bid transactions, because it's so hard to pick, you know, which, which firm has the money when they're, they're bidding on that day. Very pleased with those results. The structure is on page five. And this is the final that's sort of structure, uh, that cannot change. Um, you know, and it's, obviously these rates are fixed too, to the life of these transactions. Page six is the, uh, the model that Leslie referenced, that a lot of work included is by staff to make sure that the goal is met, that the tax rate is, is maintained at a level that's, that's stable, like forty-two and a half cents. Uh, this assumes pretty modest tax base growth of three and a half percent contributions from your debt service fund. You've got that cushion as well. So this refunding, um, is helping manage that as well. We're taking the savings upfront. Uh, with the two thousand twelve bonds, the aggressive interest rate and then cash the city has been able to accumulate in the INS fund gives the city the tools to maintain that tax rate at forty-two and a half cents. And then the tax rate does go down as well, um, after the, the bond, refunding bonds payoff to provide flexibility in the future for capital projects. Page seven, sources and uses, the legal amount of debt we're selling is nine point eight eight. Uh, certificate of obligation, there's a re-offering premium that, that British bid and the cost of issuance of around a hundred and two thousand. And then the rounding amount goes to the city, so the construction fund at closing. That will be available with the city to start using for, for capital projects. And that rounding amount goes to the city as well. Uh, so we recommend that you award the COs to RW Baird. We can, if you want me to run through the geo-refunding, you can either take action now or.
What's your preference, Mayor? Would you like to take action now or you want to go through the refunding?
Yeah, I, I mean, big picture, let's go through, let's go through all of it and then we'll come back. And we'll come back to each item.
Uh, so we'll go through the refunding transaction. This transaction, we also received six bids on page ten. Uh, you can see the winning bid was one point two three percent. And the last place bid was our winning bid on the COs was Baird. So we appreciated their effort on the COs. And I talked to their desk today about that. Very seldom see a firm win one and then come in last on the next. But we're happy KeyBank bid very aggressively and then you can see all the other firms that bid as well. So we've got RW Baird that won the bid on the COs and KeyBank Capital Markets that won the bid on the geo-refunding bond. Uh, the bonds that we're refunding, Leslie mentioned, it's the two thousand twelve bonds. Those rates were two point three five and two point seven five percent. Typically, we see key bonds like this, it doesn't make sense to refund unless you have rates, uh, less than two percent. And that really hasn't been prevalent until the last probably six to twelve months. And so the refunding, the overall savings is two hundred and forty-five thousand. I think this is what you asked about, that specific number reference on page eleven. And then on a net present value basis, it's two hundred and thirty-eight thousand. And again, the structure is, is such that we can, uh, help manage the tax rate, take that savings upfront. Structure of the debt is on page twelve. And that's the picture right through the life final maturity, uh, sources and uses on page thirteen. We need five point six nine million payoff for the bonds. This includes all the costs uh, associated with this transaction or factored into the savings numbers that presented previously. And then we would recommend that council approve and award the refunding bonds to KeyBank. I mean, the, the appendix is just the full rating report that we received through S and P. So, uh, council members are curious on all the criteria they look at, um, what was behind the debt grade. Uh, this is, you know, public information, of course. Uh, so that's, uh, really important, the increase in reserves, um, having a policy in place. That, that was really important and really helped achieve the, the positive interest rates that we did. So that's, um, all I had as far as the overview about the certificates of geo-refunding and happy to answer your questions. Uh, your attorney is here, Clark Kimball, with the legal questions.
Mayor and Council, we obviously couldn't do this without the help of specialized public finance. I think I probably threw ten to fifteen different scenarios and questions their way of, well, can you run the numbers for this for me? Or what if we want to do this? And if we want to do that and this and combination of, of all three? So, um, we really appreciate their help and of course, Clark's help on getting this to where it is tonight.
Yeah, and the city's help in maintaining that credit rating and getting that improved credit rating. Don't worry, they mentioned it a couple of times, so believe it or not, it doesn't. Everybody here knows, and you should be proud. It's, it's a testament to the city and the stewardship, uh, financial stewardship that the city's obtained over the years. Is there any question from council? I'll go ahead and open it up. I know this is a lot. So if you have any questions at all, just throw them out there. That's, this is the time to discuss any question, maybe might have about the process, um, the funding mechanisms, the resulting funds, anything, anything is up for discussion here.
I don't have any questions. We've been dealing with this for a couple of months now and been inundated with a bunch of information. I think we're, I'm good.
Yeah, this is kind of what we've been waiting on.
Right. Good interest rate.
Very happy.
Very fortunate.
I don't want to say we're that good, but I think we're just really lucky too. And upgrades helped us because rates went up and definitely helped us get that rate lower than what we presented, so.
Hey, lucky counts. We'll take that. Well, we have, uh, we have two items for consideration here on the agenda. Um, the first item that we're considering is, uh, taking action on the ordinance providing for the sale and issuance of the City of White House Texas Combination Tax and Revenue Certificates of Obligation. So, uh, this will be item number one, item number H one. And you have some, uh, you have some information, the staff provided some information in your packet about, uh, what the suggested, um, motion would be if you want to take action on this item.
Yeah, recommend motion to approve ordinance twenty-two dash zero one 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 dash zero one, providing for the sale and issuance of the City of White House Texas Combination Tax and Revenue Certifications of Obligation Series twenty twenty-two and ordaining other matters relating to the subject.
Second.
Alright, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I'm sorry, who was the second?
Michael.
Is that motion comes being both pieces of this?
No, that was the first one.
We're just, we're just doing H one right now.
Okay.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Does this, does this need a roll call vote?
Yes.
Okay, so let's have a roll call vote, please.
Um, Michael Lo.
Yes.
Heath Rosenstein.
Yes.
Georgia Harris.
Yes.
And John Chambers.
Yes.
Alright, the motion carries. Moving on to item number H two. Consider and take action on this ordinance.
I will make a motion to approve ordinance twenty-two dash zero one 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 dash zero two, providing for the sale and issuance of the City of White House Texas General Obligation Refunding Bonds Series twenty twenty-two.
Second it.
Alright, I have a motion from Councilman Harris and a second from Councilman Rosenstein. Any further discussion? Have a roll call vote, Ms. Hargis?
John Chambers.
Yes.
Michael Lo.
Yes.
Heath Rosenstein.
Yes.
And Georgia Harris.
Yes.
Alright, the motion passes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for coming. Appreciate you. Alright, on to item H three, discussion, consideration, and action on a radio signal booster for the police department. Jeez Robeson. Take it away, sir.
Alright, Mayor and Council, thank you. Good evening.
Yes, sir.
Um, this, we've, we've had an opportunity to help, uh, correct an issue that we've had within the building. Um, trying, trying to think of a way to explain it, uh, but the radios are our lifeline to us and from us. It's the way we contact dispatch, it's the way we contact each other. And we have had an ongoing issue where, um, kind of similar to cell phones cutting in and out. Um, either it's not working at all or we're getting garbled information. Um, it's digital sounds and obviously this is very important to our function as police. It's important for dispatch to be able to hold of us, it's important for us to be able to hear each other. And it's important for me to be able to monitor it and, uh, I'm not able to monitor the radio very well. So through a process, we have, um, contacted, uh, people that are able to work on this because you have to be licensed. It is a FCC-controlled, uh, device. And we're not able to just put something on and quickly fix it. It's not a Band-Aid fix. So we had to contact companies to come out and we've done research through the building and ran through it and found that we, we failed on one signal completely and the other one is, it's not very good either. So this is the solution to solve the problem. Uh, and unfortunately, there's really not any other way to fix the problem other than to have this company install this, this signal booster. And there's a lot of other needed information that I really need a technical degree to be able to explain. But that's the simple of it. Simple explanation is we need this in order to be able to effectively. Simple explanation is we need this in order to be able to effectively communicate back and forth, dispatch and each other.
Kind of like a metal roof gets, could be metal roof problems.
There, there's something in the building.
Yeah.
Probably that's interfering.
RF, radio frequency.
And it's not something that we can just stick an antenna upside a fix, it just has to...
It's kind of like a repeater, ain't it?
I'm not sure exactly what it does, but it basically grabs a signal and we were guaranteed, I believe it's ninety-nine percent effectiveness throughout the building, which is, that's what we need.
And you tried it, right?
We have not actually looked it up. This company is certified to do this.
Yeah.
We had to search everywhere and we finally got this company, they're not at Houston, to come up and do the testing. They know what they're doing and they said this will fix the problem, so we're not guessing trying to fix it. We want it done right first.
So from the time we heard this, how long until it's installed?
We've been approved, we'll call tomorrow.
It'll be pretty quick?
That's my goal.
Are they installing cable, like around the department? In addition, feeding into the booster or is it just the booster?
They're installing a booster and I don't understand all the technicalities of it, but they're, they're installing a booster into the building that will boost the signal into the building. And I've got all kinds of charts and data, but the simple explanation is that my office in that side of the building really did not do very well at all. And then on the one, the seven hundred, I believe it failed completely, there was just no signal.
Yeah, I'm seeing a horizontal cabling, which usually, that could be like leaky coax where they just have cable that runs that pretty much absorbs the signal. It's, it's how they do caves, you know, whether they have mining operations that need radio communication. So effectively a cave is what we have here.
It's going to grab it from outside and bring it into us.
Yes, and then it looks like running through the building a little bit, so. Yeah, it looks feasible.
So there's exclusions, says exclusions here, the following are exclusions not provided by this quote, can be included upon request.
That confused me when I read that the first time too. So the building has to be fire rated, level two. I wish you'd left it exclusion out. What it's saying is that you can use that if you don't have a fire rated level two building. Because we have a level two building, we don't have to have that.
We don't need any of those exclusions?
That was very confusing to me. So if you had a building that was not level two, you would have to have that.
Okay.
So right below that in notes, it says you have to have this additional...
So you have to have level two or that cable.
So because we are level two?
We don't have to have a cable.
I see what you're saying by they should have let it be down.
Yeah, it was confusing, there was no need for that. They should have just said you have a level two building and moved on.
Okay.
And then above that, it says followings included if the proposal is required by authority having jurisdiction. It's got horizontal cabling, is this stuff that we're... Uh, is this going to be included? Do we need this? It's on page four of seven in that proposal.
From my understanding...
Roof antenna tied into lightning protection.
They came in and looked at everything that we had in this building and said that this is everything we need to do what we're supposed to do. So it should all be included in that, again, that confusion that they put in there, I don't know why they did that. So if it's not listed in this nineteen thousand, then we don't need it.
Who, who are they referring to says by authority having jurisdiction? If required by authority having jurisdiction?
I want to see specifically what you're talking about.
It's right above the exclusion.
Right above exclusion, yeah. I just want to make sure we're getting everything that we're going to be needing and they, they don't come back and say, oh, loophole.
No, because that's, that's what they've checked to make sure that we're having everything correct. So they should not be adding anything back into this. They, they've come in and said this is everything that you need in order to do this. So I think what they're doing here is saying that this is the items that have to be, that that's all included into it to make it work. But I even got Johnson trying to figure out...
Twenty percent loophole?
Yeah, that as well, yeah.
Well, yeah, I saw that too. So I think that's just because of pricing at the moment, they're, they're putting a cushion in case something happens. But we wanted to make sure we have a level two, we do have a level two building and there should not, there's not anything else that needs to be added.
So one, one thing that I don't see on here is like it talks about the warranty of the equipment, but like he said, if they're running cables and all that stuff, are they going to be liable for any damages during installation? Like warranty on the installation, where is all that covered?
I would have to get to them specifically, we'll have anybody that's working in our building should have insurance to cover any kind of damage.
That's my thought, but that whole section is not anywhere in the bid.
The people that, that came and bid this are the ones that are actually installing. And all these systems that meter exceed, we have all of this already.
Any more questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase and installation of this emergency radio signal booster.
Second.
Councilman Lo, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Same sign. Hearing none, the motion passes. All right, that takes us to item four, update on the emergency management plan and implementation. Yeah, Chief Johnson.
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor and Council, I'm going to stand back here so I can hopefully kind of use our PowerPoint presentation.
Yeah.
This is a picture y'all are often familiar with and before I get started, I'm going to be quick because I've been threatened with bodily harm. To be quick, which is always a task for me. Anyhow, familiar picture, based on emergency management, historically, uh, the city has not come to great lengths for emergency management planning and I'm really happy. We've had some conversations, we've had Michael up here showing the GIS overlays and that sort of thing, some of the, as I call it, fancy things we're doing. I just kind of want to quickly walk you through what we've accomplished and what we're trying to do so you've got a kind of an idea of what's really happening. Of course, we've recognized the need for it and we've really got a fat dose of it when we had our snowpocalypse. And, you know, I think that those that were involved, we learned it was about resources. And I think at times we found we were chasing our tails and a lot of different of our partners were chasing the same resources. So really trying to really shore up communication with our emergency management partners that, that we're going to be working with during different disasters, which we'll look at at the end. But we really increased, we really have to recognize that we needed better planning. We needed operational plans in place and contingencies in place when disaster does strike. It's really been a team effort and I really, really want to emphasize that. All the way from the support of Ms. Black to the staff getting the classes and whatnot they've, they've taken. Our staff is really trained up on the National Incident Management System, Incident Command. So what does that mean? It really helps during the process as they assume their different roles. And that's what we've done, we've gone through and we've designed because we're, you know, we're a small entity. And of course, the incident command system is supposed to be very dynamic and you can plug and play and it, it's very adaptive to whatever the situation is. We've only got so many folks, so we've gone through, created a kind of our, our own little organizational chart for Incident Command and had assigned positions. And as we have these assigned positions, these individuals are able to focus on their areas of expertise and where we think their assets really lie during an emergency. Just an extent, expanded of what it could be and actually it will get much bigger than that depending on the nature of the event. So next, so some of the neat stuff in the fans, I refer to it as the fancy stuff. We've been working with the minisite software, real quick. Four sectors, the city's four geographic sector. We refer those as A, B, C, and D. All of our emergency management partners will refer to those sectors. If we have an acute incident in one of those sectors, that's where the focus will be. So it's easily geographically identified. So some of the fun stuff we've also done, there's different staging areas for fire commands, police plan, EMS command. And what these different maps do with these overlays, it creates traffic flow. So these overlays, when we do an incident action plan for an emergency event, we'll send these overlays either in hard copy or access to the app so that when the first responders are coming, and I'm not talking about the first ones, I'm talking days on end or hours on end, they know exactly what the traffic flows, where they need to be and how to get in and get out. Next, please. Big focus on a lot of this planning and we've done a lot of work, we've got a lot more work to do, but it's been on the volunteers because they're such a vital role. During the snowpocalypse, we've really proved ourselves to the volunteers, added so much value. So working with Christchurch Ministries, Anthony Johnson and Larry White, coordinating to achieve some of these goals in coordination so that we're ready to, to really squeeze and utilize our, our volunteers the best we can. Fun, more fun stuff. We can take these overlays as we're doing damage, as crews are, and field crews are going out to do damage assessment and reporting back, we'll be able to create storm pass, debris assessment pass, management, in order to be able to manage it all. So it will give us an overhead view. This is stuff also that will interface with FEMA and really more so than being able to, to create the path. Next slide. And actually the next slide. It's the forms that will be utilized because these are all the same kind of questions and all the information that FEMA needs for both public assistance and residential assistance. So it all will interface. So next, in addition, we're focused on debris management. We know with tornadoes and those sort of, sort of events, lots of debris and debris management is, is a, is a big problem. So we work with Republic Services, we've got a pretty good plan in place, working on some ideas for some contracts because if we have these contracts in place before the event, we're looking at one hundred percent reimbursement from FEMA versus eighty or ninety percent. So there's a lot of value in the pre-planning. So we've got about six locations, this is an idea of one of them, this would be a debris location. So again, it's planning, we've decided all this before it happens. All of our, that is, all of our emergency management partners that we're working with in some form or fashion. I'm just really excited because the biggest thing that Ms. Black and I took, we recently had our meeting with Smith County Emergency Management Coordinator and representatives from this Texas Department of Emergency Management, actually Regional Coordinator and the Regional Finance Director. And the, to sum up what we're doing here, Mayor and Council, they looked at us and they said, nobody else. And that makes me proud. It really, it's, it's forethinking, it's, it's, it's... And I look at it this way, it's our little park, we're always going, we're a small city. Any kind of disaster is going to have a significant impact to us, the more planning we can have in place, the less burden we are on the resources coming to us. So that's kind of where we're at, we've got a lot more to do, but I'm done.
So Mayor and Council, one reason why I asked Chief Johnson to present this tonight is he mentioned we met Smith County Emergency Management and the Texas Division of Emergency Management, regional folks. And what I told them in that meeting was, you know, the winter storm, we were all competing for resources, right? We were all competing for drinking water. And so I told them in that meeting, I said, when, the next time we're all competing for resources, I want to make sure that we have the information that you need so that we get resources first. I want our people to have them first. And so things like that, damage mapping, that's critical in getting state resources to you. If you can show your impacted areas, how many people are impacted, the degree to which they're impacted.
The significance of it, right.
That's absolutely critical in making sure that we get resources when we need them. And so I know a lot of cities are taking action after the winter storm, but I would argue that they are winter storm focused and not emergency planning focused. And so I feel like we really took it a step further and Chief Johnson has really done a great job in spearheading that to make sure that we're prepared for whatever the next crisis may be, whether it's weather related or something entirely different from a winter storm, to make sure that we're ready and prepared. And so I will say the staff has been incredibly accepting and willing to take this on. FEMA courses are not interesting nor entertaining by any stretch of the imagination. And so for the, the staff, I think at all levels, I mean, you've seen the work that, that Michael Broder has done from Public Works on this really kind of shows that it's permeated our culture and so we're all very proud of, of the work we've done today. Like Chief Johnson said, we have a lot of work left to do, but we're in a lot better shape than we were before.
Yeah, it looks like it's coming together great. So the different scenarios, it's, it's great to see the stuff you've thought about. Some of them, I don't know when they would kick in, like the EMS staging, I don't know what that would be.
That would be...
We hope it'll have to, but...
Yeah, well, it's hopeless now.
Right.
The other thing this kind of planning and information does, if, 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 if Chief Robeson and I are in the midst of operations and stuck in operations, we can ask for, for an incident management team to come in out of Dallas.
Right, and they got a playbook.
Absolutely, they know our vet, they know everything and there's so much they'll know coming into the incident, so.
If there is a tornado, a lot of times you get resources that you don't even necessarily ask for. So just having a dedicated location that they can go stage so that it's not in your way is incredibly helpful to you because a lot, you'll get a lot of things that you don't either need or ask for, they just show up. And so having places that everybody knows where they're supposed to be is, is a huge time saver in the midst of chaos.
The staging, so just think of the staging areas for law enforcement, whatever it may be, that's almost it, so that's where they go and then they're dispatched from there. And that way all that resources are allocated then. Anyway, neat stuff.
Yeah, this is great, thanks for putting the time into it. And for binge watching, probably the worst series on Netflix from what I hear is, assuming the, they're probably not available there.
That was all through minisite software?
Uh, all of those screenshots, yes, which is not, was not intended to be emergency management software. We just kind of saw the capabilities on the asset management side.
Yeah.
And put it to work, so.
Awesome. Excellent. All right, any, any more discussion on that subject?
Looks fantastic.
I'm impressed.
Yeah, I think you've been for your efforts.
As always, that you never know, you just never know.
All right, that takes us to item number five, update on the fiber feasibility study and its overview and time.
Uh, Mayor and Council, we held our kickoff meeting with Cobb Finley, the consulting firm that is going to do our fiber feasibility study on Monday. And it was a great meeting and I think they are very committed to hitting their ninety day timeframe that they laid out in their proposal. So we will really hit the ground running, reach out to Mayor on a couple of points of information. But I think our, the next big things that you will see, we need to do a survey and gather some data on satisfaction levels within the community as well as speeds within the community for both, both businesses and residential. So we are working on a plan to get that information out and hold a public event to talk about the study, what the purpose is and kind of where we see that going in the future. So I just wanted you all to be aware of that and the public to be aware that that's going to be coming out hopefully soon. So we've provided them a stakeholder list and, and they did recommend that we really take a regional approach that would help us get some funding capabilities because of low and moderate income requirements for certain federal grants. And they have a dedicated member of their team that handles only the financial aspects of broadband and fiber projects. So I think they'll be a great resource as we move forward to see how we can fund this hopefully with some other dollars. So that was encouraging.
So they, when, when do they expect to have their first update?
And they are, we are going to hold bi-weekly meetings, so I expect that I will meet with them week after next. But I've, after I've provided, they needed some information from me, including the stakeholder group and whether or not we wanted to hold a public event, so I sent that over to them today. So hopefully by the end of the week for my Friday update, I can give you more information.
Okay, so the Friday updates will contain that, okay.
I remember they said it was about a ninety day study, is that right, when it first started?
It's about ninety days. How common is a study like this, just curious?
They're more and more common right now because of all of the federal funding that's available.
Yeah, we were lucky to start the process early and retain their services because they're in demand. They're probably turning away a lot of people right now.
Bet they are, yeah. So it's going to help us all a lot.
Yeah, we'll be, we'll be ahead of the game compared to some other communities.
It's a gold rush, the, the laying the fiber and getting the infrastructure down is a gold rush. There's already some companies that are laying fiber here in the city. And they'll probably wind up being our partners in this because we're not, we're not interested in being the sole source, you know, complete owner of the whole network and, you know, ruler of always survey. We want enough stake in the infrastructure to hold providers accountable whenever they're not delivering the services that they promised to their customers. And those customers to have alternatives to get better service if the service providers are not providing the service that they promised. So that's what we're going for in this.
Yeah, hoping to get more information, like you said, in a couple of weeks, I was hoping for more today than, than that, but...
Their timeline is largely dependent upon whether or not we wanted to hold a public event because that... event because that tends to kind of maybe push it out a little bit just because of the time and effort it takes to get that planned and the lead time that that requires. So, hopefully we'll hear back from them pretty soon and see what that looks like, but I think we can get it together pretty quick.
In the retreat, you said that you love a good Gantt chart?
Yes.
Just kind of in the future, can we get like a milestone type?
Yeah, they had one in their proposal, so they'll be providing that with our biweekly updates. So, if it's something that can look decent, we'll get that to you.
That'd be good.
Sounds like you're offering to make that chart.
I think I'll spend any more time.
No, they'll provide it, they'll provide it as a part of our biweekly meetings.
Yeah, Cobb Finley presented every other week, she'll just pass it on. All right. Any, any more comments or questions on the fiber feasibility study? All right. So, that brings us to item number six, consider future agenda items. Is there anything currently set to be on the next agenda?
I didn't make a list today.
Yeah?
I don't have anything outstanding at the moment. I'm sure it will fill up, it always does.
I may have a planning and zoning item. It'll depend on the planning and zoning meeting next week.
EDC will meet this month.
And they will not have a quorum, so we will have to reschedule. Got a couple out of town.
Is the, the EDC, is all positions are occupied?
And we have one, one member that has asked that we look for a replacement for them. They're still serving and will continue to serve until we can find a replacement, but they have asked, but.
But otherwise, it's fit for?
Yes.
Okay, I got you. All righty. All right, anything else on the future agenda items? Anything to add? All right. So, this takes us to section I. Pursuant to chapter 551, Texas Government Code, the City Council reserves the right to convene executive session from time to time as deemed necessary during this meeting. The City Council may convene into executive session to discuss any or all of the following topics pending or contemplating litigation, or to seek the advice of the City Attorney pursuant to section 551.071, possible purchase exchange lease or value of real estate pursuant to section 551.072, personnel matters pursuant to section 551.074, economic development negotiations pursuant to section 551.087. Today, we'll be meeting in executive session for item number one, which is pursuant to Texas Government Code, section 551.07. The Council will convene in executive session to discuss financial incentives for the development, redevelopment of the corner of Highway 110 and North Accretap. And item number two, to deliberate the purchase exchange lease or value of real property in Town Center, Main Street TC-MS zoning on East Main Street pursuant to section 551.072. And with that, Council will now enter into executive session. The time is 6:47. One day, I hope to be able to read all that section without looking, but not there yet.
Not there yet.
The guy at the end of the car socials.
Yes, speeds up just a tad bit and you're there.
The micro machine.
I do. You're gonna be kind of bit.
This is, this is, this is, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah?
It's solid.
Yeah.
Impossible.
I always would do, I can't.
Hooked up.
I won't.
You want an impossible Whopper?
Sure, I love that. I get double meat impossible Whopper.
They're so fatty.
I'll take anything.
Yes, they're awesome.
Whopper with cheese.
Y'all, for a year, about once a month, I had this woman that would call and she'd tell me, "They gave me another real Whopper." Every time I go order an impossible Whopper and they keep giving me a real Whopper.
That should be an advertisement for the impossible Whopper.
I'd say that.
I'm like, it, it takes some.
And you said no.
I said nope.
Nope.
We're back. I hope we are.
Alright.
It's quite a delay.
Alright. The time is now seven thirty-six and council will return from executive session into the regular council meeting. Regarding number one, we have no action for that. Do we have any action for item number two?
We do. I would like to make a motion to authorize the city manager to execute a purchase agreement for the property located at one zero five East Main Street here in White House for no amount, whatever.
A second.
Alright, I have motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Same sign? Hearing none, the motion carries. That leaves us to item K, adjourned. Time is now seven thirty-seven and this meeting is adjourned. Ice.
Get a new javel.
Hey, look at Ellis.
He's a double-sided taper.